Good evening. Welcome to the 2014 PTA Council-sponsored candidate forum to present the Board of Education candidates. The Board of Education and Budget vote will be held on May 20th this year. I would like to introduce the two candidates running for the Board of Education, incumbent Marian Gilland and Pelham resident Lonnie Phillips. We will begin with each candidate giving a three-minute opening statement and will end with a two-minute closing statement after they've answered some questions. Marian, can you please begin?
Okay. Good evening. Three years ago, I made the decision to run for the Board of Education. With the experience of the last three years now under my belt, I am thrilled to be able to return for another three-year term. I'm confident that I have the tools and the time necessary to commit to working with the administration and the community to navigate the ever-changing educational landscape. The current environment forces the district to provide an increasing list of mandated curriculum and services, most notably the implementation of the Common Core and its required testing. Simultaneously, we must find a way to financially implement these requirements under the state tax cap. With the new superintendent appointed by the Board last year, we have begun a new era under these constraints. The cooperation from our teachers, administrators, and other bargaining units affords Pelham the continuation of the programming to which we are accustomed, as well as enabling us to look for new ways to challenge and support our students. The advocacy efforts of all involved have impacted those at the state level, and some of what we have vocally opposed is beginning to turn in our favor, but we have a long way to go. As a 28-year resident and a parent of three who have gone through the schools, my youngest is set to graduate this year, I have seen the changes brought on by external forces. Not only do I believe I have a great understanding of what makes learning rewarding and enjoyable, I am passionate about it. I have the time to devote to advocacy efforts and keep very current on curriculum matters as well. I am well-versed in the financial and legal responsibilities of the school district and bring a desire to exceed the standards we must uphold. It's been my pleasure to serve the students of the district, and I will be proud to continue that service for another term of office.
Thank you. Lonnie.
Hi. I'm Lonnie Phillips. I believe that every child in Pelham should have access to a world-class education that not only prepares them for college and career readiness, it enables them to be good citizens as well. I believe that my upbringing, my experience, my connection with the larger education community uniquely qualifies me to be a Pelham Board member. My mother was an educator and later became the director of a child development agency, and I saw firsthand how folks that when you cared about, saw that you cared about them, stood up a little taller. They worked a little harder, and with little successes, confidence was built. For the last 10 years, I've been actively involved in our schools. As a volunteer, as a PTA parent, I moved to Pelham when my daughter was in fourth grade. She's a senior now and graduating from the high school. From the Cyrenoid PTA to the Pelham Dads Club, to the middle school PTA, PTA Council, and now a part of the Pelham Diversity Task Force, I've been serving, I've enjoyed serving our children. I've worked with the Hutchinson School to facilitate a deliberative dialogue on how to make our schools more welcoming for all parents. I regularly attend Pelham Board of Education meetings, and I'm acutely aware of some of the issues we are facing here in Pelham. Our community is changing. Our student population is changing, and this brings some unique challenges, and we're going to be facing some interesting times in our town. I'm very familiar with the changes that have occurred in recent years to curriculum, testing, teacher evaluations, budgetary restrictions and data privacies as a result of mandates. As we face these changes, my experience in supporting other communities just a little ahead of us will be beneficial to Pelham. My involvement in both the state and national levels, particularly in the area of family engagement, give me a unique perspective on where education is going. On the national levels, I've participated in conferences and attended workshops and hosted deliberative dialogues. In New Jersey and in Georgia, where they were concerned about graduation rates, I hosted a deliberative dialogue with parents, state education, legislative officials, as well as community leaders on too many children left behind. I believe that my experience, I believe that my professional experience in technology will be an asset to the Board. My 20-plus years' experience in IT will be essential in helping me, helping us make informed decisions. I've worked in media, financial industry, as well as in healthcare. I think here in Pelham, we are in a good place. We have an extremely talented and well-informed community, a competent staff, and a superintendent who generally cares, and I would like to continue my time, commitment, and energy to serve the children in Pelham. And again, my name is Lonnie Phillips, and I'm a candidate for Pelham Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you both so much for your thoughtful statements. I'd like to begin discussing the Common Core, which is all over the news in various forms, and I want, if you could explain your position on it, the district's position, from what you know from working on the Board and what you've read in the paper, and where do you see that impacting the future of education in Pelham? Lonnie, how about you?
Okay. The Common Core, I mean, the Common Core is a new set of standards, and any time you raise the standards or change the standard, there's always difficulty. I think the challenge that I've seen with the Common Core has been the way that it's been implemented. I think that raising the standards in a comprehensive way is actually good for all students. My challenge with the Common Core is just the implementation hasn't been as, done as well as it needed to be have done. As far as here in Pelham, I think that, I think that we have a challenging education system already, so I think that many of these standards are just a change in the way that we teach things. So I do think that we're already poised to actually embrace some of the things of Common Core, and again, some of them, they just need to be tweaked a little.
Thank you. Marian.
I think that the Common Core implementation in Pelham was probably as smooth as it could have been. I don't think that we had major gaps in what we were teaching. I think that the, the timing of when things were taught probably had to be adjusted. I think the biggest concern for parents in Pelham and the students and teachers is the testing. And until we can, you know, try to impact the Board of Regents and the Education Commissioner, we're kind of stuck with these tests. They're just too long, there's too many days, and in, in my personal opinion, I don't think they really test the standards at all. And I think that's, that's an issue that hopefully will be dealt with through, through advocacy efforts. We haven't had, you know, I read recently about a kindergarten in the city that they actually sent a letter home to parents, letting them know that the kindergarten show was canceled because the kids had to be college and career-ready. So I think that we haven't had any changes like that here. There's still a lot of tension over the tests, but I think that we in Pelham have had a, had a great curriculum, and I don't think that that has been impacted as much as, as in some other districts, you know, the city in particular.
Great, thank you. I feel like the thrust of Pelham in response to the tests is to really put less pressure on the students. I think particularly with our new superintendent, he's done a good job in doing that. What about the impact of Common Core on teachers and teacher evaluations? How has that been addressed in Pelham, and what is your feeling on having those be a major part in the evaluation of teachers?
Me?
It's you first.
Okay. I don't see that, you know, this whole APPR and the teacher evaluation system, I don't think that the tests have impacted our teachers as much as it might. I mean, statewide, there really were very few teachers who were at the bottom level. I don't think that, I mean, I know we didn't have any teachers at the, at the very bottom level here in Pelham. There were some, you know, we have some classes that don't have a state exam, so that's been the most difficult part of the process, is finding out how to test kids in the beginning of the year and at the end of the year, when you have to make stuff up. So the teacher evaluation portion, I don't think we've changed much from what we were doing before. It was the Danielson model, and it's still the Danielson model. I know that there's, you know, as much anxiety for the teachers, though, as there was, you know, as there is for the students, but I think that now that you're, you know, after we've had a year of this, I guess, actually, this is the second year of the evaluations. We don't know how they'll turn out. I think, I think there's a calmness about it on the surface. I don't know, I can't speak to how nervous the teachers are, but I don't, I don't think that our teachers will be impacted that much by the, the Common Core and the APPR.
Thank you. Lonnie.
Yeah, from what I gathered, just from talking to teachers and parents, is that we already had a very comprehensive evaluation system in place already. So the APPR and adding the Common Core piece was really just something that really didn't affect us directly. We were already, we're already taking time to actually evaluate our teachers and making sure that they were doing what they were doing in the classroom already. I think adding the, the test scores only complicates things, because sometimes you're not actually getting true evaluation of a teacher simply because students don't perform well. And I think that's an added piece, it's just complication. I do believe, though, that we were already doing a comprehensive job evaluating our teachers.
Great, thank you. So, you know, some people consider this spring, some people consider this budget season. I'm sure you consider it a budget season. Can you tell us a little bit about where we are with the budget in our district and how we got there? And are we maintaining program? Did we have to let go of any teachers? And I know, Lonnie, you were in the audience a lot for a lot of the budget meetings, so I think, Lonnie, you should-
I should go first?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, from what I gathered from the budget and my, my looking through the budget, is that the, the budget actually is comprehensive, and we're, we're not letting go of any programs. Our superintendent was able to do some really creative things with the administration's contract, as well as with offering early retirement to some teachers, actually maintain a very comprehensive budget. So from what I hear, this is one of the lowest budget-to-budget increases in a very long time.
Can you talk about the percent change? Marian.
The budget-to-budget increase is only .74%.
Thank you.
Now, that does translate into a higher tax levy. I gotta get my tax words straight. But we are tax cap compliant, we are under 2%. I think it's 1.93% will be the increase in the tax levy, but the budget-to-budget increase is, you know, I don't know, it's hard to get much lower than .74%, so this is historic.
Could we talk a little bit about advocacy and how the Board is participating in advocacy efforts, how the PTA has participated in advocacy efforts? I know you've both come up through PTA. Lonnie, you're still holding a prominent position in Westchester PTA.
That's correct.
So if you can talk about advocacy efforts and the combined work of grassroots efforts and how it's impacted change this year.
Me, right? Okay. So last year, we started an actual advocacy committee that's made up of Board members, or at least one Board member, Madeline Smith, Peter Gerizzo, and PTA Council members, like yourself, and some Paula Wood from the public, from the community, sorry, not from the public. And there's been a concerted effort to have a letter-writing campaign. Prior to that, the Board, you know, we, I don't want to say we shied away from advocacy, but there was no, no real mechanism that we had, and through the efforts, you know, it's, a lot of these things are really combined efforts. It's not enough for the Board to sit here and say, "We don't, we don't agree with this" and pass a resolution. We really need to bring the community into these efforts, and I think that that has really been a great job, having all these letters, you know, right online, that you can push a button and it, and it goes, makes, makes the whole process much easier. It's been a great help to the Board to get the community involved.
Do you mind also referring to the issues that have been addressed through advocacy this year, or what most of the letters were addressed about?
I believe that this year, the, the biggest issue was the in-bloom, was the, was the data privacy.
Yes.
And I think through the efforts in Pelham, we put them right out of business.
Yeah. There, there have been a lot of advocacy efforts around initially. I mean, I've been involved since the tax cap. Now, it's data privacy, the in-bloom, well, that's, that's gone away. I think the next big one is going to be the gap elimination, where we're trying just to restore proper funding back to our schools. I know that we did a good job this year, but there's still a long way to go with making sure that education is funded properly. So I've been involved with, with that. I know that we've had some letter-adding campaigns, we've done some, lots of grassroots work, both with New York State PTA as well as locally.
And I think that-
Yeah, it's great.
I don't know, can we just sort of come, have, the gap elimination was also something that, that was a letter-writing campaign from here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great to see the impact of combined efforts and the motivation of larger groups, too. It's been a pleasure to be a part of that myself, and I'm glad to see the changes with the help of everyone involved. So thank you both for your advocacy efforts. Can you talk a little bit about APs in the high school and programming, I guess, at large? Are, do you feel like our student population is achieving and meeting 21st century standards?
Is that me?
Thank you.
I, I do think here in Pelham, we're doing a fantastic job at educating our students. I think that within our high school, there is education competition, which I think is both good and can be stressful for students. A number of students are fighting to get into AP courses and honors courses because there is that competition. Well, my friends are going this way, so I want to go this way. I do think that we do an incredible job at, at educating our students. I think that we're, we're heading in the right direction towards the 21st century. I would still like to be, see more technology in the classroom personally, being a technologist, but that's just me. But I do think we're, we're doing a great job. My, my daughter came through the middle school and high school, and, you know, she's off to, to do some great things, so I'm excited about that as well.
Great.
Yeah, I think that the rigor of courses, of course, that's not, not one of my favorite words, because I, I'd rather say "challenge" of the coursework is, is, everyone has an opportunity to be, to be challenged, and one of the, one of the thrusts of the Board was to get more people involved in the, in the higher-level courses, to give them a chance, and I think that that has been, we've been moving in that direction, and I think that it has proved beneficial for the kids. We don't have the, tomorrow is the day when everybody will announce what they're, where they're going to school, and we've had some pretty impressive college acceptances this year. And I think that it's, but it's, it's more beyond the AP courses, you know, like Lonnie said, I think we do need to, you know, technology is an area where we know we'd like to increase our efforts. I think we have, you know, a top-notch science research program. You know, there's a lot of things that we offer, and there's a lot of ways for, for kids to get, you know, a well-rounded experience with, you know, clubs, the robotics, the science, you know, science is a, is a big thing that we, that we have in the high school. I think that, that is definitely benefiting our students.
Are we able to meet the needs of all students, no matter what their needs are, no matter what level they're at? Are we able to do that in our school system? Marian.
I think that we are. I think that we are trying to improve that experience for all students. One of the big projects this year has been forming a new strategic plan, so I think between the strategic plan and the, the Diversity Task Force and the, what was the, the-
Wellness?
Hmm?
Wellness?
No, 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 not wellness, the Excellence in Equity Committee. You know, there's been a lot of attention, a lot of work being done in that area. So I think that once the strategic plan is unveiled, we don't know what it is yet, it's still being worked on, that there will be more opportunities for people to, for the students to, to get the kind of attention and the kind of coursework that they need.
Lonnie.
Yeah, I, I do think that we do a, a good job educating all students. I do think that we do need to make sure that we keep every child in focus as we make the changes in education. I, I know that our students with special needs require special attention. I think we do a good job at, at working with them. Obviously, there, there are always going to be challenges with, with students who come in, who move in from our district, who are not at the same level of all the rest of our students, and making sure that they're able to catch up during their time here. And that does require some special attention. It does require making sure that they are in focus, and I, I think the district is, is looking at trying to figure out ways to keep those specific groups that are already struggling in focus, so that we can get them to where they need to be, college and career-ready by the time that they finish their, their time with us.
Are the current mandates affecting the budget in such a way that we're not able to offer the supports that certain population might need, or are we still managing to keep that important part within the budget?
Well, if you tell by a budget-to-budget increase this year, we're doing an incredible job here in Pelham. I, I do know that it's, there are stresses that are placed on the budget because of the mandates and restrictions that we are going to have to face as time goes on. I've, I've seen in other communities where they're really struggling to take care of their students, who have, who need a little bit of extra help, and those programs usually are the first ones to be cut. And the challenge with that is, is when those parents aren't vocal in that community, it's really tough for the Board to know what the outcomes are of cutting certain programs. I think here in Pelham, we're, we're presenting a budget where we're not, we're not cutting any program. So I, I think, so for us now, we're in a good place. I think with future stresses, that yet, that remains yet to be seen.
Yeah, this year was, the budget was definitely impacted and helped by the teachers with the, with the contract that they agreed on for this year and next year. Otherwise, we might not be sitting here saying everything was, was in such good shape. And it, it's really indicative of how much our teachers care, and that, that they really do care about the students, and that they, that they negotiated in good faith, and it made us able to afford all the things that, that we want to be able to keep doing.
Yeah, our superintendent and deputy superintendent here actually do an incredible job at managing our school within, managing our district within budget. I, I don't know how they do it. It's like magic.
It's a lean, mean fighting machine.
There's not a lot of fluff, there's not a lot of extra stuff, but it does do exactly what we need it to do, and children are getting their needs met. And in other communities, it's not the case. I mean, so we have something really, really special here in Pelham.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about the initiation of task forces that our superintendent has brought forth. Diversity, you mentioned, strategic planning, wellness. What do you think the impact of having these task forces have done for the community, or what will they be doing for the community? And I do know that within the framework of the task force, there is a timeline that makes action eminent. So can you tell us about your experiences with those?
Okay. I actually sit on the Diversity Task Force with the focus on parental engagement. The interesting thing about the Diversity Task Force is it, it takes time out to take a normally not-in-focus group of students and parents and puts them in focus. It redirects some of the attention towards those parents who've been hard to reach. And I, I've seen firsthand how parental engagement and parental involvement, as it increases, so does student achievement. And I do believe that the end results and what we're looking for from the Diversity Task Force is student achievement, and we're, we're directing our efforts towards those students who need the most help. And by engaging, my portion with engaging their parents, figuring out special ways to engage their parents, so that their parents can be active in supporting what we're accomplishing in the schools, and them taking on a role to accomplish that at home, really does make a difference. I'm convinced that my daughter does as well as she does, because my wife and I are both involved.
I think that one of the other benefits of the task force is I was on the Social Studies Task Force, there was also the Math Task Force, is you're able, because, like you said, it's a finite timeline, and you, you want to come through a process with some sort of recommendation or action item, and we're able to involve different groups of people. So somebody who can't commit to a long-term, you know, every month you have to be in a meeting, or twice a month you have to be at a meeting, it's a shorter timeframe, and we've been able to get a lot of input from different community members. And I think that it's a, it's a method that will continue to be, to be used, to, to look at different things that we want to look at, whether it's, you know, a people thing like wellness or diversity, or curriculum like math and social studies.
Math has been a hot topic in Pelham for a few years.
Me, my big mouth.
And I know the Math Task Force is currently looking at perhaps changing the programs that are available, and I'm wondering if this is, in your estimation, the right move at this time, when Common Core standards have yet to been formally laid out and completed?
It's me.
Yeah, you first, is that?
Math is, I sort of jokingly refer to it as a four-letter word, but it is, it is a hot topic, and it has been a difficult topic. When you go back and you look at all the different ways of new math, I mean, I, years ago, I was taught new math. Well, there's a lot newer math than what I was taught. I don't, I don't know if I could actually do some of the new math that, that we've seen now, but the Common Core standards have been set, and New York has come up with a curriculum. That's the problem, is the Common Core is standards, and it's what you're supposed to know. You should know this level of algebra by this year, but they don't really, most states don't tell you what to teach. New York does have modules, but they're really unwieldy, and they really only rolled them out. They haven't even been, I think, I don't even know if they were finished before the tests started. So that has been an issue, but from what I've read, Common Core has been based on Singapore math, so I think that there seems to be maybe a coalescing around different, you know, maybe one approach, another new math, but it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy topic. Leave it there.
Thank you.
They're gonna, there's gonna be a recommendation soon, and I'm, I'm waiting to hear, just like everybody else.
I'm tossing the hand grenade to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was explosive. No, well, math and Common Core, I, I think the, the challenge is, is that with, some of the questions that I've looked at on the math Common Core, for me, didn't make sense, but I'm not an educator, so looking at them from a comprehensive standpoint, maybe this is, we're trying to expand the mind to be able to reach the answer that may not be obvious to everyone. I, I think it's conceptual, you know, it, it, yet, for me, it will, we've got to actually see it in action. I do think that increasing math rigor and teaching core, core elements of mathematics early does help children later on. How you implement that and how our curriculum will be laid out from the state may not always be the best. So I, I, I agree that we should actually let professionals who are math educators actually look at it, and design modules that work for each individual district. I do think that districts should be able to choose how they implement if they get their children to those standards. How they do that at the district level should be left up to the district, as opposed to something that is designed by the state.
Thank you. So with the Common Core, with the information coming out of the task force, forces, there's a call for more professional development. a call for more professional development in our district. And there's been also a published calendar for next year, which has a new type of calendar with eight delayed starts, and trying to capture the most time for instruction and the most time for professional development. How do you feel about having more professional development played into the calendar? And do you think the community will be able to understand what an impact that has on learning and be able to accept the change in the calendar?
Okay, so I, I guess with the introduction of new standards, there needs to be training, right? I, I work in healthcare, if a new application is rolled out, everyone has to learn how to use it. And I think with Common Core, with a number of these mandates, our educators have to learn how to move in a different way. So there must be some time for them to be trained. And our superintendent is trying to come up with creative ways to make that happen. I think the delayed starts is an interesting concept. I, I think it does give the, the teachers that time to, to learn these, these new techniques or whatever it is that they're learning during their professional development time, whatever the, the coursework is for that day. But they do get an opportunity now to sit down and kind of learn this, because we're changing the standards while this thing is moving along. And if they don't have time to actually learn how to change what they teach, then they're not going to actually meet the standards. And that ultimately affects our community, it ultimately affects our kids. So I do think that there is a lot of need for making sure that our educators are trained so that they can be the best that they can be for our children.
Yeah, I think that increase, an increase in professional development benefits the students. So there is a, an inconvenience factor to having those eight delayed starts. It's easy for us to say because our daughters are graduating. We won't be affected by it from, from a parent's standpoint next year, but I think that, you know, the superintendent is trying to think outside the box and find new ways of delivering the, the product to the students and to the, to the community. So I'm hoping that it will go smoothly, and we'll find out. If it doesn't, it's, it's not like it's set in stone for every year to come. But I do think it's an interesting idea, and I do think that, you know, everyone will benefit from it.
Delayed start is better than a half day, if you're asking me as a working parent, right? If it's a half day, then I have to take off and come back to, to take care of the needs of my child. So for me to be able to delay my day or to work out something in the morning for them so I can still go off to work, the delayed start actually works better for me, in my, in my thinking, that it would work better for me, rather than having a half day where they, one in the morning and then at 12:30 I have to come pick her up or take time off to, to have somebody there to make arrangements. So it does seem to work a little better. I manage to be able to get time off in the morning if I need to, to do special things. So it may work better.
And also there's support from the PTAs and-
Right.
-the intention to offer programming or a place for those children to be, so hopefully we'll-
Yeah, I think that, you know, it did, it wasn't an idea that didn't come without thinking, what can we do to, to support the families at work? Or, you know, if the children want to stay home, they can stay home. If they want to come to the school and do a program, they can do that. So there was a lot of thought that went into it.
Now, there's a lot of time that you spend with your board work, and Lonnie, I'm sure you're preparing yourself for what might you spend. Mary, can you say on estimation how much time you spend during a week on your board work?
This is, this week is a bad example. There, you know, a minimum of, I would say, two hours a week. I mean, we get a, we, we get updates every week that we read through and-
That's not including meetings, are they?
No, 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 I'm saying if that's, that would be-
That's prep.
Yeah, that would be a week where there's no meetings. But since we are on committees and we are on task forces, there, there are many meetings that we do attend. We, with the new board coffees, we're out in the community, you know, an hour here and an hour there. But it does, it adds up, and it is, it is a rather big time commitment. So it could be six hours like this week, or it could be two.
Lonnie, and are you prepared for?
I am, actually. Actually, I spend a lot of time already doing a lot of volunteer work, both at the state as well as regional level with PTA. So for me, adding additional time, as long as I can schedule it, I think I can meet those, those needs. The key thing for me is just running a schedule. I mean, my, my life literally runs on a schedule, and those who are close to me know that I'm running with my hair on fire from meeting to meeting to meeting all the time. So as long as I have a schedule and deadlines, I don't foresee that being a problem.
Well, I want to thank both of you for your commitment to our district and the time that you do spend and the time that you will spend, both of you, with the board. And I think both of you and all board members for their commitment to making this a fantastic district. At this time, I'd like to ask you both for your closing statements. Lonnie, if you'll start, please.
Okay. Again, my name is Lonnie Phillips, and I am a candidate for Pelham School Board, and I'd like your vote. I'm actually very excited. From the, the time that I started considering running for the Pelham School Board, I've been excited about it. I love our community, and I think that this is an incredible community to actually help be a decision maker on. I look forward to sharing some of the thoughts and expertise that I bring from a lot of my advocacy efforts, and I look forward to meeting with our community and hearing what they have to say. I realize now that I'm new and I don't have all the answers, but I will listen and engage our community to find the best solution for all of our children. And understanding that we need to keep, as we make decisions, to keep every child in focus.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank the PTA Council for hosting this forum, and it's always helpful to, to talk about the issues facing our district, plus it's nice to be able to discuss them in such a friendly environment. I hope the public knows that I will continue to be a dedicated board member. I look forward to the next three years. It's a challenging time, but an exciting one. And together with our superintendent and his team, we are charting a new course, bearing in mind that we do tend to hold on to our traditions here in Pelham. I encourage everyone to, to talk to any board members and to us with any questions, and please reach out to us. And please remember to vote on May 20th.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. Thank you.